Stuff in my eyes.
Well, and Christie was probably, Christie, Christie, yeah, it's kind of Christie and maybe Nick or somebody, yeah, it's C H. Because I talked before, I said, I'm trying to bring to all the town that she, what we have to do is like, let it sit, and take these, put it together, you know, so I was pretty proud to take that out there, but I think she's probably looking for. Yeah, she was gonna be there, call her number, uh. That's been your, your plan. Actually, I've been, we're just, you know, I've been ready to say, you know, with Jay always had all this, it's never dropped.
Oh.
In the mailroom?
Yes, I guess we're there.
Well, every time, oh, you go to HR, I guess you're that way. A lot more untruly as we're over the air, but before the gas year was so, uh.
This is moving into student insurance.
Um. Yeah, she's two thousand two, my other son, hi, thank you. Uh, what is two thousand? Which one was that? That's where I was. Uh, all happened, they were all bigger in South America.
Evening. Pretty good.
Well, interestingly enough, she's in her, and they, the meal was, something, and she really didn't know how to cook, and he had to help, because they had to. So, dear work.
Of course.
He said, oh, no, he said, um, Daniel, I've got a little wish, um, tell you.
Oh, come on. Oh, yeah. So, okay. Paul could have just stayed. He's pretty much spent the day here, I think. He could have done some work for us. Yes.
And this is, I don't think it's the beginning. Your beginning? Yeah. You could have just stayed this afternoon and helped on.
Yes, I, I watched him walk in, and I thought, yeah. I would expect nothing less.
Do you remember Chisholm?
I do. Oh, yeah. Oh, for heaven's sake, yeah.
Because your memory's just been astounding today.
Had to go back in time, haven't I?
You did.
To your, your always famous, homemade potato salad. Ever tell you that story? She tried to pass off store-bought potato salad by putting it in a bowl and putting three green onion rings.
Green, green pepper rings.
Green pepper rings on the top of it, and tried to say it was homemade. The little cheat? Yeah.
So I can't do that with the macaroni salad now.
No, you can't, because I will call you out on it publicly. I'm, I'm going to own the fact that my fruit is from Sam's.
So you didn't cut it all off?
No.
No. And it would not be frozen before, right?
Correct. Yes. Oh, that's a cute idea.
Well, I just hope I'm getting it, because.
She's going to be neutral, I know her. Oh, I'm sorry.
You guys have too much fun.
Yes, we are.
The expulsion hearing, uh, is that the middle, not hearing, is that the middle school kid?
Yeah.
Want to beat up the girl?
Uh.
The bus, the last one? Or is that different?
Give me a second, uh.
I forgot to ask.
I know, and I forgot, and I know there's no hearing, because the parent didn't want one.
Did you text your friend?
I couldn't remember where, which school it was. I think it's going to make a difference.
No, it doesn't, but text him, and let me think, and it'll come to me here, uh, because I think it has to be, we had one at West Warren. Yes, and I think I had something else too, though, and I'm, I'm confusing them. I hate to mispeak here.
No, and you never know, someone's going to ask about what the education plan is going to do. I generally like to just say, we'll work out the education.
And we, we absolutely are, he is, he is, you know, there is a plan. Oh, I'm sorry, I should have.
That's all right, I forgot to ask.
Yeah.
I, I meant to ask today.
And I'm drawing a blank right now, because there is, I can't remember which one went to expulsion.
Yeah. Can't see UHS.
Yes, that's what it is, yes, yes, that's what it is. I, I thank you, yeah, that's it. Yes.
I'm going to call this meeting of the Montague County Board of Education to order. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start tonight's, uh, meeting off with a resolution, and, uh, that will be School Custodians' Day proclamation. Whereas custodians are an integral, integral part, a component, to keeping our students healthy and maintaining a clean and germ-free school environment, whereas our schools would not sparkle and shine without the dedication of our school custodians, whereas November 4th, 2022, is School Custodians' Day. Therefore, Montague County School District expresses its deepest appreciation to these valuable employees and commends their good work on behalf of the children. So let's all keep in mind, Custodians' Day is November 4th of this year. Thank you, custodian, that day, if you would. Uh, superintendent, uh, moving on to delegations. Do we have any?
Guess I could have went, God.
Sorry, Beth.
I could have went wherever I go.
All right, I'm going to read the, uh, top of the, of the sheet, because I think it's important that everyone has heard this and it's read into the record. Speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others who may be affected by your comments. While it is not our intent to stifle public comments, speakers should be aware that if your statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, you may be held legally responsible. If you are unsure of the legal ramifications of what you are about to say, we urge you to consult with your legal advisor. And these presentations should be as brief as possible and limited to the subject matter for what you signed up to talk about. Uh, first speaker tonight, Trenton Bailey, uh, will be limiting to five minutes if I didn't say that. Uh, concern is reading.
Hello. My name is Trenton Bailey. I was here at the last board meeting, I was talking about the issue of dyslexia and reading. I believe my father gave you all some handouts about some statistics that came from the Department of Education. I would like to walk you all through that. So, last year, from the school year of 2021, 2022, there was two thousand, there was 250,899 students enrolled in West Virginia schools statewide. Of those, only 42% were reading on grade level. These are, these are statistics coming from the State Board of Education, from your standardized exams at the end of the year. With a little fine scope, let's zoom into Montague County. Montague County last year had an enrollment of 11,260 students in the year of 2021 to 2022, with an average reading rate of twenty, of 53%. That means that 5,290 students were not reading on grade level. This is a crisis. Is there anybody here that doesn't think that this is a crisis? Okay, so we're all in agreement that this is an issue that should be addressed. So then the question is, what are we going to do to address it? Is it a lack of willpower? Is it a lack of funds? Is it a lack of knowledge? Um, I have a suggestion. I went to a private boarding school in upstate New York called the GAO School. It specializes in reading disabilities, specifically dyslexia, um, and they have offered an invitation to take members of the school board, the superintendent, and the special education director, from, uh, either the dates of December 5th, or December, through December 6th, or December 12th through December 13th. The Bonnie Bailey Dyslexia Awareness Foundation, which is our 501(c)(3), would happily pay for the lodging and travel locations to get to and from Buffalo and New York to go to this place. I would invite the school board to come to the GAO School with us, so you could see how one system is done. Because I think it's very clear that we should not be leaving fifty, or, uh, under, just under 50%, 43% of the students behind each year. Now, if you look at the NASSAM scores that were released this week, that is to say that 22% of students in Montague County and statewide were reading, or were considered proficient. So that proficiency is to say that the end of this school year, they are reading at the next year's grade level. So that means that only a quarter, roughly, approximately a quarter of the students in our county are read, are prepared for the next grade level. So that means 75% or three out of every four is not prepared to go to the next level. Now, the question is, what are we as the adults, the leaders of this community, going to do about this? Are we going to hamstring our children and not allow them to have economic viability moving forward? Are we going to allow an uneducated electorate? Th- these, these, these aren't rhetorical questions, I, I think that these are things that need to be addressed. Um, we would like to engage with you on a further conversation, uh, and go offline. We've left you all some communication contacts, uh, and I think my father has some more on how we could resolve this issue, uh, and what other states are doing. Uh, for reference, West Virginia is the second lowest state for reading scores in the nation. The only state that has worse reading scores than us is the state of New Mexico. So I think we should keep that in perspective. I think that we need to understand that we are a wealthier community in the state, uh, because three, because three counties and, and the state, they're, are mostly living off of subsidized income as their largest source of revenue. So we have the funds, uh, with a state, with, with an annual county budget of about 140 million. I know it was a little bit over last year, because you got some extra COVID funding, about an extra $2,000 per student, uh, which gave you about 175 billion dollars, 175 million, not billion, uh, last year. So I think that there are some very prudent solutions. I think that if you continue to, uh, go down this route of not educating these children properly, uh, we're just going to head for a societal collapse. We, we cannot allow our children to not be successful, because these are kids. We're the adults here. We have to be the ones leading on this issue. And if we've all agreed, which we have, that this is a crisis and it's unacceptable, what are you going to do about it? I've, uh, that's my invitation. Come up to the GAO School, we'll help you get funding if you need funding to train new teachers for a new curriculum. But I don't think that anybody in this room thinks that 53% of the students reading on grade level is okay. That's just, I think that that's the matter. Thank you for your time.
Our next presenter is Jeff Bailey, and I would appreciate, don't, we are not going to respond one way or the other. Yes, no?
We understand.
Maybe.
And, uh, but let me just say that, that as a practical matter, uh, you know, I don't like this forum where I'm standing up and you're sitting down, it's like I'm lecturing to you folks. And, uh, and the fact that my son and I have been on the front page of the newspaper the last three Sundays in a row, uh, and we're very private people, uh, it brings us personal pause, but if it helps one kid learn to read, it's worth it to stick our necks out. And normally, Mississippi bails out West Virginia, but they read at 17%, 17 points higher, because they address dyslexia and they use a free screener called Exercise. Now, it used to be, and I think it still goes on, we screen every kid in Montague County for speech therapy. If you have an awful W problem, they give you a speech therapist and make sure you're all right. But if you can't decode the English language, you're in trouble. Now, my son came home one day and he said, Dad, that teacher messed up and graded my paper wrong. And he'd made a math problem, 45 plus 48, and he wrote 63. I said, Son, what is 45 plus 48? And he said, 93. And I said, well, you made a six instead of a nine. He goes, oh. So the question is, is that the teacher's fault? Is it his fault? It's an encoding fault. And we've got to deal with it. And what happens is, there is nobody at fault, but the system is not properly addressing the problem to help elevate these kids. When, when kids don't follow along in the classroom, the teacher goes, well, maybe he can't hear me. Maybe he can't see the board. Let's go get his hearing tested. Let's go get his vision tested. Oh, he jumps around, asks lots of questions. He probably has ADHD. You go to see a psychologist and psychiatrist, and they want to give him, uh, drugs to drug him into catatonia, so they'll sit in a chair and behave, instead of trying to get attention to learn something that's very challenging for them. And what happens? The parent goes out and gets a psychologist to test, uh, 600 to $6,000, sometimes the insurance pays, sometimes it doesn't. You come back to the school board with the results of the test, my son, my daughter's dyslexic. Oftentimes, the school board will say, I don't like Sally, who administered this test, her tests aren't accurate, or we'll accept them or we won't. The next thing we do, if they do accept them, is they generate an IEP. What do they do with the IEP? To begin with, it's a fire drill. Teachers come running in the room, it's fast, they're on their way to other places, nobody wants to talk about your child, we're going to do these accommodations, you got them? Okay, okay, let's sign them, let's get out of here, stamp, stamp, stamp. Oftentimes, they call you the next day and say, hey, that IEP is wrong, we had to revise it, can you come back and sign it again? So that's an IEP experience, but what really happens is, in the IEP, they say, okay, we're going to accommodate this child. You get six spelling lessons, six spelling words instead of 10. We're not going to take off on your assignments when you can't spell them. Well, what have we done? We've really dumbed me down the curriculum. We haven't taught the child how to encode or decode anything. And so when the child goes along through the system, he gets in geography class, he can't spell Mali, much less Tajikistan. And so what happens is, the child gets frustrated. The teachers say that, that the child is not trying hard enough. And the child gets picked on by his, his friends and so forth. And this just goes on and on and leads to depression, and it leads to a lot of failure and anxiety that goes on in families. Now, let me just tell you, I assure you, the scenario that I just spoke about is going on in every school in Montague County every day, with some child, some teacher, and it rolls up to you guys. And we could try to catch it in advance, we can try to do better, we're here to help, we're here to work with you, we're not castigating anybody. We are here to just roll up our sleeves and work with you people in the trenches and see what we can do as a community. I mean, I belong to Rotary, it's one of our five pillars, the literacy is one of Rotary's five pillars, we can write, uh, global grants, we, we, our little Rotary tried to do something out at Ridgedale a few years ago. We're committed to this, and we intend to work with you folks and try to do what we can to help 5,000 kids in the, in the county of Montague, more than every kid in every high school added together, that is struggling and is not performing on grade level. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next speaker, Michelle Clemmer, amendments.
Hi, my name's Michelle Clemmer, and I would like to read to you a proposed resolution in his opposition to amendments two and four. During the 2022 general election, West Virginians will be asked to vote on two constitutional amendments that will dram- dramatically impact public education and include some of the biggest changes to West Virginia constitution in nearly 100 years. As a board entrusted with the education of our students and the fiscal responsibility of our school system, we feel as though we must take a stand and inform the public of the potentially devastating and far-reaching impacts that amendment two, the property tax modernization, and amendment four, educational accountability amendment, will have on public education. Whereas, the board finds that the passage of amendment two will cause the removal of constitutional protection that provides critical funding for public education, as well as law enforcement, fire protection, and medical services. And whereas, this board finds that nearly $200 million in funding for public schools in all 55 counties could be stripped away if amendment two is passed, resulting in fewer schools, larger class sizes, fewer support services, and reduced opportunities for our students. And whereas, the board finds that education decisions are best left to experts and not politicians in the legislature. Amendment four will take important decisions about our schools away from the people who know best how to give our kids a high-quality ex- education, experts, parents, and local school boards, and instead adopt a one-size-fits-all legislative approach. Whereas, the State Board of Education was created as a nonpartisan governing body for our schools that would be immune from politics. Our students should be safe in their community and get a good education that prepares them for the future. Our schools and classrooms should be free from political agendas. Whereas, the board finds that amendments eliminate local control and local decision-making in our county school system and government. These important decisions should be made locally and not by politicians in Charleston. Amendments two and four are legislative power grabs to shift power away from the local governments and our boards. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education, for the reasons above, shall not offer support for amendment two or four due to the real and serious risks it poses to our students and public education. And further be it resolved that the board calls on every local school system in West Virginia to adopt a similar position and to tell citizens of the potential impact for their county and urge them to vote no on amendments two and four. I will be presenting this to you for your consideration. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next delegation, Mark Nestler, Electric Bus Pilot Program.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, superintendent. Uh, I'm Mark Nestler, I'm the vice president of Business Development and Strategy for Green Power Motor Company, and it's exciting to be here with you tonight to discuss your involvement, uh, being deployed next week in the statewide electric bus pilot program. Uh, as you know, Green Power, um, announced back in January with Governor Justice that we were moving a manufacturing facility to South Charleston, where we will be producing both the Type A and Type D electric school buses. And in June, uh, the governor announced that he was, uh, instructing the, uh, Education Department, the Economic Development Department, and Green Power to work with the school districts in developing a pilot project and starting to move the buses around the state for schools to have that opportunity. Last Friday, round one of that pilot project ended. Uh, Kanaw, uh, Cabell, and Mercer County were the first three schools that participated in the program with the, the BEAST Electric School Bus, standing for Battery Electric Assisted Student Transportation, so that's the great acronym. Um, and, uh, with the great work from, uh, from your leadership of the board and the superintendent and the transportation staff, uh, this county stepped up to the plate and said, we would like to be part of round two. So it's very exciting that next week is when that starts to happen here in your county. Uh, the bus actually arrives tomorrow, 10 o'clock tomorrow morning, out at the, uh, facility. So anybody that would love, love to have your picture in that, uh, face in that picture, come on out tomorrow so we can get you in, in that. Next week, the, uh, training will occur, uh, for your first responders, your drivers and your mechanics, that'll happen on Tuesday, November the 1st. And actually, on Tuesday afternoon is when the press conference, uh, will be held out there at the facility as well, in, uh, announcing. at the facility as well in announcing so that your community knows when that new electric bus comes out there on the route on Wednesday morning, it's okay for their kids to still get on that bus because it really is a school bus that they're supposed to be getting on. And then that deployment will occur on Wednesday morning. We were just chatting tonight which route we may be looking that first day on Wednesday, but it will be on that Wednesday morning that it will deploy. You will have that vehicle then until Christmas. So the last day that that bus will run under round two of the pilot is on December the 23rd. You're getting it a little longer than six weeks. They're supposed to be in six-week tranches, but we're having to take it away for a couple, three days because the legislature wants to use it for their legislative interims for transportation. So we're pulling it out for a little period of time, and that's why you're getting it a little longer than six weeks in that period. I want to stress the importance of the leadership that you're doing in this area because electric buses have not had the piloting across the country that this state is doing in assuring what these vehicles can in fact do out here for you in the community. What is the real-life, real-world scenario, the range, the concerns, and all of these things? Back in 2016, 2017, there were a couple of pilots up in Massachusetts and Vermont, but if we look at the technology difference from where those vehicles are today, from where they were at that point, the data from that perspective really doesn't meet to where it's at. So it's not just what you're doing in your leadership here in this school district for the state or just for your communities. There's really, the nation is watching this pilot project as it's happening in West Virginia, and the nation's looking for the data results that we're seeing. You're not the first ones. So the first three have helped us understand some things. There's been some things that we have all learned in the first six-week period, and we know that how we can address some of those things as we come into this community and this county next week. We'll have a whole different scenario because you've got a little more mountain terrain up here, and we're going to have a little more cold weather. And for those that don't know, heat saps energy more than air conditioning does. And so we know coming into this run that we're going to be looking at a whole kind of different testing than we've seen up at Kerr already to this point. And that's why, in working with the state agencies and working with your staff, we have come to the north. So it's here, it's Wheeling, and it's Petersburg that will be running the three BEAST buses during that period of time because we want to bring it up here so we can in fact see that real-world scenario. So we're excited that you are part of this. I know that you've also applied for federal funding for deploying vehicles in your fleet going into the future, as well as we've had conversations with other opportunities that may be available from state funding for you to be able to bring some of these vehicles into your fleet as well. So thank you very much.
That's your five minutes. Appreciate your time. Our next presenter, Todd Washburn, spectating.
Yeah, just give it to listen.
Oh, you're just hanging up? Oh, yeah, that's very, very few people. That's awesome. All right, Superintendent, I'd like to take the reports, discussion, and follow-up action out of line and move number B, letter B, to our first.
Yes, I, we're going to have a brief presentation from Morgantown High School on their proposal for an outdoor classroom. So I'll turn things over to Mr. Mahalco and his staff at this time.
I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Tiffany Davis, who is going to do the presentation.
Pass them up quick. Give you one second, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Tiffany Davis, and I'm currently a 12th grade English teacher at Morgantown High School. A couple of years ago, I earned the distinguished award in teaching Fulbright from the U.S. State Department and traveled to the Netherlands to study education for sustainable development. And even though COVID occurred during this time and I had to come back a bit early, one of the most powerful things that I brought back from my time in the Netherlands was a commitment to outdoor education of Dutch students within the public schools. And so when I returned to the U.S., and of course, the past couple of years, we've been dealing with a COVID pandemic, and so that has called for us to reimagine learning and reimagine learning spaces. And so I began talking to Mr. Mahalco about the possibility of creating a outdoor classroom for MHS students. However, when we talk about Morgantown High, it's incredibly unique. It's one of the last remaining neighborhood schools that we have in our community, but it's also landlocked. So I'm going to set this over here because it keeps falling. Sorry. Unlike the other two high schools who have vast acreage at the ready for them to access, Morgantown High has very limited space. And so when Dr., when Mr. Mahalco and I were discussing kind of where we were trying to look at outdoor classrooms, we came upon the vacant lot that is next to the parking lot adjacent to the garage. To be kind of begin, one of the missions of outdoor learning is that it really promotes students excelling academically, socially, and emotionally. And since MHS is committed to educating the whole child, it's a really great opportunity to address the so many various needs of our students. This is, I'm sorry, this is my Photoshop attempt to show what the outdoor classroom will look like. So some of our goals is that we would like students across curriculum to utilize the classroom not only within academic content, but also in terms of extracurricular activities, areas where, an area outside that is shaded, unlike what we have in the bowl, where students can kind of congregate with their clubs after school. One thing that is not shown on my Photoshopped picture is a fence, which we will have on the perimeter of the property so that we're able to protect it. But one of the really like large, kind of overarching goals of an outdoor classroom is that it really increases students' critical thinking skills and their problem-solving proficiency. It allows for students to think not only critically, but also to think in real-world terms and to kind of manifest their learning with hands-on learning. And as we all know, it's not just elementary school where kids learn more by functioning with their hands, by fiddling with tools, by looking at demonstrations, but also at the secondary level. So this is the current plot of land that we have right now. There's some gravel. This was taken a little while ago, but there's some gravel, there's a grade, but other than that, it's a pretty vacant lot. Over here on the right was my first attempt at a design through Photoshop. We were still trying to figure out kind of the structure before speaking to the engineering students of Morgantown High. And so you can kind of get an aerial view of what it's somewhat going to look like, except that we will actually have a pavilion over the area. When we think about rethinking how we learn and redefining how we learn, there is great interest in outdoor learning. We've seen in other schools in the county, we have greenhouses. Eastwood has a number of different initiatives within their school for students to go outside. UHS, I believe, has a new amphitheater where students can go outside. Morgantown High does not have that opportunity unless you go down to the freshman football field, which is a very steep hill and in the winter is pretty much inaccessible. So when we think about what we're looking for for Morgantown High, we really want to build something that is not isolated from indoor learning, but is something that is woven into indoor learning. An area where it's not just going outside and sitting under a tree, but an area where everything that is constructed is an example and a demonstration of sustainable development. So along with the pavilion that we will have, if I go back, which has a green roof, which is completely self-sustainable, we will have a metal roof, hopefully, that will capture rainwater. We will have recycled plastic tables. We will have demonstrations of solar and wind, which I was super excited to hear about the electric buses because I think that this is really kind of a step forward. So the whole point of this pavilion, of this space, is for every single part of it serve as a learning tool, not just a couple of picnic tables sitting around for students to gather around in, but actually a tool where students can go out in AP Environmental, they can go out in English class, they can go out in history class, in art class. We also have commitments from a number of student clubs who want to assist not only in the design and completion, but in the upkeep and also in decorating, is not the word that I need to use, but in the decorating of the outdoor learning space, like the art club. And I come to you because I have been able to obtain a $10,000 grant from the U.S. State Department that was available to me because I'm an alumni status of the Fulbright program. So I was given a grant, and I had to choose a community project, and Mr. Mahalco and I talked about it, and I chose to invest in an outdoor classroom for Morgantown High School. I've spoken to many students. I have survey results from students over the past year or so where students are incredibly interested not only in participating in the creation of the space, but also utilizing it. The Green Initiative Club received $450 from the Montagnalia County Commission for a grant to contribute to Raze Gardens for the outdoor classroom. And then they did that before they came and talked to me, but then they offered it when they heard what my interests were. And then another student received, recently received, a $1,000 grant from Barbara Flash, Flash, Flash Hour for something to, something that she can choose to donate it towards anything, any kind of landscaping. There are also a number of other grants that we can look into from the West Virginia Nursery and Landscape Association, and then also the West Virginia Department of Environmental Protection. And then there was one other grant that my partner from WVU, who also received a grant through the same program for the Safe Routes program that they're doing at Suncrest, found another grant the other day that she mentioned to me. I have $10,000 that I'm bringing to the table. I also have a commitment from Unique Homes, who says that they will grade the land and level it for us completely as a volunteer effort. I have a commitment letter with me tonight from them, and we are here to kind of let you know what our interests are and to hope that you are on board with possibly supporting an outdoor classroom for our students.
Okay, board members?
I think this is a great idea. I'd like to see it expand, maybe get, because there's so many food deserts in Long County. You can actually build gardens, have students build gardens and...
Yeah, there are a lot of initiatives nationally that do those sort of things where students participate in the agricultural growth of food that they actually use within the cafeteria. Now, we have 1,900 students, so that would be a lot of radishes. But I think that it would be a great opportunity, especially just to teach students how to have these skills that are really quite life-changing in a lot of ways. There's a lot of research, and Mr. Mahalco gave you a whole printout of some research synopsis that I have done through my dissertation about the effects of outdoor learning on students, on their cognitive abilities, but more importantly, on the connection to place that it creates. Access to outdoor spaces, to wild spaces, makes you love a place. And when you love a place, you develop that affinity and you develop that desire to protect it. And I think that that is something that's critical for our students. Yes?
So this question is probably more for Amanda. What was our total outlay at, for University High School? And do you have any idea what the costs are for this type of initiative at Morgantown?
No, I don't have an idea of what it would cost. Are you asking how much did we put towards university?
Yes.
I think University High was over $178.
Okay. Because, I mean, we had talked about all this, the board members that were on at the time, about the fact we needed more outdoor classrooms when we were going through the pandemic. So I'm sure the superintendent will have to decide where this goes next with Mr. Mahalco and administrative team there and you, obviously. You must have a vibrant committee of, I would think, of students and other interested faculty.
I do, indeed. Yes, absolutely. And also, there were a couple of slides that I skipped over. I did do survey results for South Park among teachers and then also parent interest. And 76% of teachers were interested in having an outdoor classroom accessible to them. 91% of parents were interested in having an outdoor classroom, and a small percentage of those also offered volunteer hours, supplies, things like that. And then the South Park, 94.7% supported having an outdoor classroom in that location as well.
That was definitely my question because everything we do over there, we'd like to get the community involved. And I think it's gotten to the point where our administration over there knows that that's going to be a board question, so they just do it upfront. I would be cautious on counting any volunteer for, because everything that's done with volunteer help becomes a professional job. So I just assume, let's try to do this effort professionally and try to figure out how we can get to that point, if you guys, when you guys bring it back. I appreciate volunteers, but I'm also aware of the fact that a volunteer commitment and a professional commitment is two different things.
Absolutely. And you also understand construction and all of the ins and outs of those things, right?
I was going to say, you get volunteer burnout pretty quick.
Yeah. Well, I do have a commitment letter from Unique Homes.
That's when you plan on having volunteers and they don't show up. You get burnout in a hurry.
Right. It's easy to say you'll volunteer, but I do have a commitment from one company that will grade the land for us and spread the gravel if it's there available for us. One caveat that I do need to mention, though, is that I must spend my grant by December 1st, at least a portion of it. And so as we move forward, we're hoping that I can go ahead and perhaps purchase the fence to, for the parameter and kind of keep that in storage for now until we get to the point where that can actually go up.
And just for the record, it's not taking any parking?
No, not at all.
Because I know there's going to be a question. Okay, whether it's a question, it's absolutely not taking any parking.
And with that said, it becomes a different issue where that's permeable surface and you're going to have to work on water retention. So you might, that might be a really good spot to spend some money, is to try to figure out what the actual runoff of this is going to be, work with an engineering company in our area and get that. That kind of site development is critical upfront, but I won't give you any more information on that side. But I think that there's some things that, as I'm sitting here at Williamson Schreiber in the room, there's some things you guys got to consider, expenditures upfront, things we got to look at. So I think it's an awesome idea, and we just got to, we just got to get it formalized so this board can consider it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Keep on moving forward.
Thank you for your commitment.
Thank you for all your work.
Superintendent, ALC project update.
Yes, a little bit of board construction talk for us. So we wanted to bring in our friends from Williamson Schreiber, who are heading up the ALC expansion to bring the board up to speed on where we are there, so.
I'm Greg Martin. I do not. I'm Greg Martin with Williamson Schreiber Architects. I'm here to give a board update on the ALC addition. I spent a good hour and a half this afternoon with Ms. Washington and Ms. Tellerico going over the construction documents that we've generated so far. We are at the final stages of the documents. There's well over 30-plus pages here that we flipped through, kind of a page-turner, going through everything from the site layout, the building layout, the mechanical systems and the plumbing, and how it ties into everything. We're moving towards wrapping up the documents after some comments today, getting ready to submit to agency for review. Once we get the agency review, then we will work with Ms. Washington and Ms. Tellerico about getting advertisement together and getting this thing out on the street for bidding. Everything, based on my last presentation, has pretty much stayed how it was in configuration with some slight modification today of door placement and access for toilets and access to control students from the middle school to the elementary to the grade school. But everything has been moving forward since my last presentation here. The exterior, the facade, we've been up, had some more site investigation, determined the stone veneer, what company was used on the existing Excel building, and was able to reach out to that company and get information on that product so that we can use it as a basis of design so that that facade blends in with the front of the building on the new addition. And then we talked today about what needs to be considered for the masonry building that is staying intact, what facade treatment needs to occur there and/or roofing treatment that needs to occur there to be consistent within our project scope and our project budget. After today, I'm going to take the documents back and then let Jason Shanty, our contract administrator estimator, with us look at the documents, start doing a final construction document estimate review so that by the time we go through agency review, we have an idea of where we sit within our budget. Any questions?
Any questions?
Were there any big changes from what we saw last time?
There has not. There has not been any big changes from what we saw last time. Last time, we had the general office, the three classrooms across the front, which makes up for the new elementary school. We had the PE space that's going to be utilized by all grade levels, kind of tucked in the back with that STEM lab towards the very back that's accessible from your elementary and your middle school. Now, your high school students will have to have some permission, card access, things that have to be worked out with the administration over there to be able to get access back to that STEM area. But everything is in the same configuration that we had last time during our presentation. We've just updated everything and moved from the design development concept that we had to more of construction document, or final documents here.
So is there some way that you can send us some of this information when it's all ready to go out?
Yeah, I will be, when I get back today, we're going to make these modifications on our documents here, I'm going to share them with Ms. Washington, and then she'll be able to share them with the board as you guys need to be, as you guys would need to see them.
Well, and then for the public, this is going to be one large building.
Correct.
We're going to be able to join the existing structures together so that it's all...
One contained building. The current Excel building is the sprinkled building that is currently sprinkled. When that was built, it was sprinkled. Because we're adding to that and connecting to an original building, the whole, the whole building, the new construction and the original masonry building will have to be sprinkled as well. So that is all being part, you'll have one building. We've limited our entry points to where we have two main entry points, one for potential bus drop-off or high school drop-off, one for middle school and elementary drop-off. So they're utilizing portions of the building to be able to separate those students as needed.
And the safe schools exit entrances are going to be, for each, I can't remember, for each individual, a pod, if you will, of grade, or is it just...
The safe school entrance will be at the, we'll call it the main entrance, and that would be where all your visitors would be directed to go into. That is where also the bus drop-off will be because that was where the new loop will occur. The secondary entrance was where your more, your vehicular traffic will occur. That'll just be a entrance to utilize drawing parent drop-off or bus drop-off, so an administrator would be there. When that bell closes, the doors will shut and everybody will be directed to that safe school entrance toward the front of the building.
And the estimates include fencing?
Currently, the estimates did not include fencing. It was just the construction of the building and once we tie the Excel building to the masonry building, everything will be contained with under considerably one roof.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Excellent work, as usual, and I'm happy to see this thing moving and our staff will work with you on this and it'll be an excellent project, looking forward to getting this all under one roof. So thank you for coming up today and working with us.
Thank you.
Superintendent?
All right, Board Members, we're down to item C. Unfortunately, I bring to you this evening a recommendation for an expulsion. The superintendent recommends that student 2022008 be expelled from Montegalia County Schools for a period of 365 days for violations of the Safe Schools Act.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Give me a second.
Second.
All in favor of the expulsion of student 2022008, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Superintendent, D.
Okay, this is an accounts payable, this is addendum A. We'll have to ask Mr. Kelly to recuse himself.
I'm already leaving.
Thank you, sir. We'll grab you here in a second. Superintendent recommends that the board approve accounts payable addendum A as presented in your executive content.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor of accounts payable addendum A as presented, signify by aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same?
Go get him and Ollie.
Oh, okay. Don't wonder if my knock worked. We need a bell. Okay, Superintendent, accounts payable addendum B?
Yeah, this is item E, this is accounts payable addendum B. As you can see, Mrs. Walker has recused herself from the room. Superintendent recommends that the board approve accounts payable addendum B as presented in your executive content.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any questions? All in favor of accounts payable addendum B, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Okay, I won't try my knock again, it didn't work.
Oh, he's coming after.
Okay, Superintendent.
Consent agenda. Make yourself comfortable there. All right. We're going to move down to our consent agenda. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the consent agenda as presented to include items A, expenditures exceeding $3,000, item B, the payment of salaries and accounts payable, item C, our student trips, item D is our Head Start class configuration, and item E are the minutes of previous meetings.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I wanted to ask some questions about some of the expenditures over three. So the displays for the schools, item number two, are those for elementary schools or just various schools around the county?
Various.
So is it, what does it replace?
The original interactive boards, sort of white boards, and you know, we've developed new technology now and we need to keep up to date.
We talked to Chris about this and Chris said it's very difficult now to get projectors. Those things are out of date. So we're going to go more in line with the type of display that you see here. It'll be a smaller version that we'll put in classrooms and we do anticipate that you'll see another request at a future board meeting. It'll be with different funding sources, but in order to get these, this will be our first round of getting these into our classrooms and then we'll bring another one back for you.
Now, we're still going to have some kind of board that teachers and students can write on.
Sure. The traditional, like just a white board, marker board.
Yeah, blackboard in the olden days. Yes, with chalk.
They're white now and we use markers.
They're white and they use markers. So we're just going to have that and then we're going to have this, this display also available. Okay, I just wanted to...
You said you had a couple, did you have another?
No, I really think that was kind of it, to be honest. Because I think most of this technology levy stuff seems to be tied to some of that installation, so.
All right, any other questions? All in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Superintendent?
Okay, we are down to the awarding, item six, which is the awarding of a couple of contracts. We have two for you this evening to look at. Let me get down here to where we are on that. The first one is for our school bus tires and this one's a little complicated even for me, but the superintendent recommends that we approve Glot Felty Tire Center for our steer tires, which I'm told are our front tires. And they're on a state contract, so we don't put that out for bid. And the superintendent recommends that we approve Reliable Tire Company LLC for our drive tires, which are our rear tires.
Okay, any questions?
Can we get the motion first?
Oh, sorry.
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
I'll second it then.
And Board Members, I did ask Tony to hang around so that he could provide the expertise. As I told him before we came in, my knowledge runs out at their round and they're made of rubber, so Tony could answer any specific questions.
There's an inside joke in trucking where as you buy round tires, they just don't put the hole in the middle, bouncing up and down.
See, I don't even understand that one. I don't get the joke.
The casings, I noticed they had 50 to 60 and Glot Felty had 50. Why would they, I mean, I know our tires, depending on, they're never capped, so they're always going to have, other than if it's been damaged some point, they're going to have good casings.
The reason for the change or the fluctuation in the prices has to do with what the current prices are. In the years past, we've seen a fluctuation of $5 to $10 from each time they would come and get casings.
Well, yeah, and I experienced that too. I was just, thought it was odd that it's, if you're going to put a variable, useful pick a number.
Yeah.
Pick one back. I just wondered what their thoughts were there. The rest of it, I think, all looks pretty good. I'm glad the refinishing part on the wheels is, because that's the time to do them, when you got tires off of them. That's all I have.
So how many tire, sets of tires does a bus go through in a year, one bus?
We can go through, one set of tires will last a year. We should be able to get two years out of them. We get about 30,000 pounds. It just depends on the road conditions. There's a lot of variables, but we should get a year and a half, two years out of a set of tires.
And so, and how many buses do we have that run daily? Because I know we have other buses that don't always run.
We have 130 in the fleet, 111 of them are on the road daily.
And you're right, the roads have a huge impact on those tires.
Any other questions? All in favor of the school bus tire contracts as presented by the superintendent, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Superintendent?
Okay, our second contract this evening is for our kitchen repairs countywide. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the vendor AIS for our repair, replace, and preventive maintenance for all of our kitchen equipment.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. So where are these people located? Because we used to have state people that weren't that far away.
I believe they're around Pittsburgh.
Okay, so they're going to come down from Pittsburgh?
Yeah.
I don't think we have local vendors like you did.
Our locals aren't around anymore.
I think our previous vendor came out of the eastern Panhandle.
Yes, and we were having a very hard time with service calls.
I mean, we're not close to the, we're just not close.
Yeah.
So...
And this is our current vendor and we are very happy with the service they are providing.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor of awarding the contract for kitchen repairs countywide to AIS as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Any board member updates?
Yeah, I have one.
Go ahead.
I recently spoke to Dr. Craig Schaefer. He is, he works with the WVU Medicine Trauma Center and he did a workshop for us at St. Francis Xavier, it's called Stop the Bleed. And it's a program that stemmed from the tragedy at Newtown and Sandy Hook. And we were, it was about a 45-minute session and he expressed an interest in getting into the public schools and do this presentation as well.
We have it countywide.
Has he done the presentation?
I'm not sure which, I'm not sure who did it, but...
Yeah, we have done the program. I'm not familiar with him.
Yeah, they actually brought in, you know, simulated like plastic thighs and we had to pack the wounds and, I don't know how many, do all the teachers do that now?
Well, we have a trained group and we have that at every school. Susan Haselybacher, our lead school nurse, and Adam Hankins prepared that. So beside our AEDs in the schools are the kids, the Stop the Bleed kids. So not every teacher is trained, but it's a very worthy...
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And very necessary.
Yeah, I was shocked when I went through the training on how much, just a simulated bullet hole, how much packing has to go in. And of the school shootings, you know, heaven forbid if we ever have to go through that, almost all the casualties bled out. In many cases, that could be because the shooter's still there and people couldn't get to them, but if we could have more people trained, I think the county, this gentleman is, he's on it.
Well, I'd like to have his contact information.
Yes, I will certainly give that to you.
Thank you.
So we were invited to go to Project Search and Jen Hagerty and I went, and it is a program where students and their families opt to do job shadowing and training and some academics at WVU hospitals. And the goal is to be able to have employment at the end of the program and it was very nicely done. And then I know we have our own county program that we have teachers on staff and students that are, again, able to shadow out in the community in different ways, so I thought that was a really worthy, I was glad that I was able to go. Then a lot, several of the board members went to see Dr. Campbell at South that did the sheep brain dissection.
Not this Dr. Campbell.
No, no. And it was with her Toyota grant and she just was so inspiring. You could just see the students just light up when they were doing something that not everybody wanted to do. So I'm sure Mike and Ron probably have other things to add. Then last week, this Dr. Campbell and I went to Education Alliance and it was nice to see the support for, with business and industry in the state. And one of the highlights of the whole presentation, other than our IT students being there and doing a wonderful job with their e-sports, e-gaming curriculum that they have that I think we're all really anxious to see, that's over at M-Tech, was the Grow Your Own program about recruiting and being able to inspire students that think they might be interested being in the teaching field and get them on that track at an earlier date. I know Superintendent spoke to, was it Dr. Warren from the State Department? Who was very also inspiring. And so I know Superintendent is interested in trying to move that forward in this area. There are some, if you will, grow your own deserts in the state, several county groups. There are, I think they said like 41 counties that were participating.
In that neighborhood, yeah.
And it seems by the end of it, three years post-high school, with the last year having a stipend, it's going to be really cultivating a whole new group of teachers in the state. So I think that was probably one of the most exciting presentations I've ever seen by the Education Alliance, so. And I know Superintendent probably can add more to that. So my only other thing, and I don't know if this is time to ask, I was wondering if we could have a transportation update sometime in November since we'll have the electric buses. So then we can find out how all this is really working with our terrain and our temperatures and what people really think about. I'd be interested to hear Tony's thoughts, the mechanic's thoughts, the driver's thoughts, maybe even some students giving some comments on what they really think about this mode of transportation.
Be good to schedule out around a site visit from the manufacturers too, be a good combination. The only thing I have, and I updated my phone, so I don't have the information as much as I should, but our project, Isaac, is Thursday from 4:00 to 5:15 and we've all been invited to that also, so, over Westwood, so, I think Westwood.
Yes.
100% sure it's Westwood.
It is.
100% correct.
Yeah, it'd be 4:00 to 5:15 on Thursday evening, so if you can make time, be good to be there.
I don't have anything on the MPO because our meeting was moved up to this Thursday in November, which will be bringing them here. in November, which will be bringing them here. Eventually, I will get them here. We keep bumping it, but I think we'll be good this time. So anyway, on that, but I wanted to touch base on something that Nancy had said about the Dr. Campbell's class. It was fun to watch the kids in their critical thinking, looking for the tumors and everything. This one student, she was really excited about, and so I was, so I was asking her, I said, what kind of field do you think you want to go into? She said interior design. I thought, okay. But she was really stoked about cutting up her brain, but she was going into interior design. But it was, it was fun to watch them, because she didn't give them the answer. She, she let them slice and look and the critical thinking part, and it was very interesting to watch. And the brains all had a tumor, and so they had something to look for, so.
Pretty good.
Of course, one student didn't want any part of that, and she turned around and stared at the wall for the whole time. She could do it on a computer and looking at it, but as far as the actual cutting of it, she didn't want any parts of that, so. And that's good, because now she knows that, you know, rather than wait till she signs up for a college course, and then all of a sudden she realizes she doesn't like the sight of blood. That was all good stuff, very enjoyable.
Mr. President, just very briefly, I wanted to mention, I wanted to review the schedule with you for the Green Bus Initiative, so that you're all aware of that, and I wanted the public to know as well. I think our guest had mentioned that the bus will be delivered tomorrow. I think we're getting the, the charging station, I think Friday it comes in. And then, Teresa, make sure I'm getting the dates right. November first is, is our, is our press conference.
Tuesday.
So Tuesday morning, about eight-thirty, that's when the trains will happen, and then at eleven-thirty, we're doing, it will be like a bus, you can get on the bus and take a train ride, and then one o'clock will be the media press conference.
So all of you are invited to, to the, the press conference. I'm anticipating that if you are available, you'll be speaking at the press conference on behalf of the, the Board of Education. But all, all of the members of the board are, are invited to attend the press conference at one o'clock. You could come out at eleven-thirty if you, you want to check the bus out, if you want to drive it, or you can ride on it, or whatever the case may be.
Instant torque.
Yeah, I don't, I don't tell very many people, but Tony knows, I used to have a C D L, bus driver's license, so. It's long expired, so don't ask me to drive.
That had to be in Alaska.
That was in a different language. Different world, different world. But maybe they'll let me sneak driving it for, around the block or something, I don't know. But anyway, that's, that's on the first, and then on the second, is when we're actually going to deploy, I like the terminology, so I'm gonna steal your terminology, to deploy the bus out. We're, we're gonna actually have a run, our kids are gonna be on it, on a regular run. And again, I'd like to invite the board members. Tony has made the run available, so I think we could, we can get all the board members, if they wanted to be on the bus, to, to be able to ride it that, that morning. I'm, I'll be there, Teresa's gonna be there, we'll have some press there as well on that morning to, to take the bus out and actually carry our kids to start our, our pilot program with the bus. We're really excited about it. And I did, if you all had any specific questions, I wanted to keep our representative from, from Green Power around, so that, that, again, I don't know the technology behind it, but if you had anything specific that you wanted to ask him before he left and before the bus arrived, you'll have the opportunity, you would have the opportunity to do that if you wanted to. So I, I kind of twisted his arm and asked him to stick around a little bit, just in case you guys had any specific questions, because I know he only had the five minutes for delegations.
I'd like to answer your question that you asked a minute ago about the, the reporting. Can that be okay?
If you want me to go over here? Get a mic. So, you were talking about November. I would suggest that we bring those back to you once we complete and have the data for the full thing, which will be, we'll bring it back to you in January. The other thing that we will do, and this can be as broad or as limited as you as a board and the Transportation Department wants, today I did two roundtables from Canaan, Cavill County, where we did the roundtable with the drivers, the mechanics and everyone putting their feedback in. So we would love to have that once we're done with the drivers, with the mechanics, if parents want to be involved, if kids want to be involved, because that's what the state is looking for. The Department of Education was part of those roundtables, the Economic Development Agency was part of that roundtable today. So we would plan on that roundtable kind of scenario coming back in January, and then we'll also be able to, to, to bring that data to you. That data will show starting and ending mileage, it'll show starting and ending state of charges, it'll give you ratios of state of charge to mile, it'll show you difference between climate and temperature and what weather was, you know. Being thirty degrees isn't the only information. If it's thirty degrees and clear versus thirty degrees and snowing, you've got different scenarios. So all of that data will be collected that we will be able to give you at the conclusion of that period of time.
What's the, say, you put the bus in, it runs the whole day in the trips, how long will the recharge take?
So the, the chargers that we are bringing out in the pilot, if you will, is, is temporary infrastructure, okay?
Is like a quick charge?
No, they're not quick charge, they're actually slow charge. You actually, at this point, don't have the power grid supplied to your facility that could allow you to bring in quick charge. We actually, when we were out there a few weeks ago, we were looking at even some of the potential problems you can have with the slow charge at that particular facility, which when you look at long-term deployment with a bunch of electric vehicles in your fleet, then you've got to come in and look at that whole infrastructure. What do you have to do with your power companies? How do we need to set those things up with you so that you can meet those needs? In the short term, what we're doing under the pilots is we're bringing in that temporary charging that gets us through the period of time. I'm not necessarily confident that the two forty-hundred amp chargers that we used in the last six weeks will be adequate to finalize this project up in the long term. That, that same charger we've been using is what's going to be hooked up on Friday, but as I've been sharing with Tony, I fully expect to come back within a week to ten days and potentially looking at, this may sound silly, a faster slow charge. Again, I can't bring you a D C fast charge because you can't handle it, so what I'm gonna try to find is a better slow charge, so that, in particular during the day. So if we go back to this heat situation, and he's got a seventy-five mile route, he wants to put this on, okay? So if he's on a seventy-five mile route, and he comes back in and that battery, because of heat, is twenty-five to thirty percent when it comes back in from the morning, I need a quicker slow charge during the day, so that we're back in a hundred percent before that vehicle goes out in the afternoon. So I'm bringing one set in on Friday with a, with meetings that have been going on all week of looking to put something better in in that temporary infrastructure in that period of time.
Because I know on a quick charge, you get eighty percent. Isn't there a difference of percentage of which you can get with a quick charge versus a slow, like you said, a fast slow charge?
It, it really is just, so it's the kilowatts per hour that are feeding into the vehicle that gets you to that state of percent. So, you know, if you're fast, if you're, if your slow charge is coming in at, at three-point-four kilowatts per hour versus eleven-point-four kilowatts per hour, we can be talking as much as twenty-five to thirty percent difference in the state of charge in that three-to-four-hour window period before the morning and after, afternoon run.
That's what I was, that's what I was meaning.
You know, I, I particularly want to make sure as we get into the cold weather, that we've protected that state of charge, particularly early on. You know, once we've been in it two weeks, and even we talked, we were talking tonight, we're probably gonna run that seventy-five mile route once that bus gets charged, after the charger comes in on Friday, just to make sure we know where it's at, because we want to make that run before that first kid gets on it, so we have the, the confidence there. It's like, in Grant County, it's doing a twenty-mile round trip up a hill and then a thirty-five-mile trip up a hill and then charging. I don't want to put a kid on it until I've done that, and I think we'll do the same thing with that seventy-five mile route before we run that next Wednesday in that deployment.
Are you rotating which run, or is this bus, okay, so we'll be doing different runs throughout?
The plan right now is we're willing to utilize three different bus routes, two weeks on each one of them. Two of them are gonna be kind of more city setting, and the longer one would be the country, more of a country setting. We want to be able to get a good feedback of how it does in the city, but also outside the city limits, too.
So it'll be three, three different drivers, then?
Yes.
Okay, so the other drivers that may be interested really won't have an opportunity because they're not on those runs?
Right. We're looking at the ones where we can kind of meet the mileage and everything. And then also with the type of bus it is, the ones that are gonna be on it, they have experience with the transit bus and everything. And the size of the bus is a little bit bigger than a normal transit bus, so we gotta be careful who we put on it until they're adequately trained and everything.
So a type D school bus, if you think it looks like a transit vehicle, because it has the flat nose, the, the front tires, those are the round black things, Superintendent? The tires are behind the door instead of in front of the door. And that is, a forty-foot vehicle is up to ninety passengers. This vehicle is also six inches wider than the rest of the vehicles that are in your fleet, and it's eleven foot four on the clearance, because your air conditioning unit sits on the, on the top. And, and your, your heat and your air all flow through that air conditioning unit, because it's all done through that process as well. So that's some of the size difference that he's talking about. You know, everyone looks at the vehicle, particularly drivers who are used to driving a type C, which is the conventional bus with the big front nose on it, they look at it and say, oh, gosh, I can't take that on this road, because my roads are really narrow, those kind of things. And generally, what I have found is when the driver gets in and drives it, those things go away, because it's actually an easier handling bus than a type C. I can take a type C conventional and give you a three-sixty, and I can turn the type D inside that three-sixty on a type C, because of the turning radius and the handling of the vehicle. And so generally, I took some video the other day, because I said there was no way that the thing we were on could be called a one-lane road, because it wasn't wide enough to be a one-lane road, and you can see how that vehicle handled going down that kind of road. And the torque, you mentioned torque a minute ago, that's the first thing that a driver says, that they can't believe the torque and the pickup that the vehicle does have. But there's some training that goes with that. And so part of what we were doing in our roundtables today, you know, a diesel engine has a hill hold, right? Well, these don't have an engine, so you don't have a hill hold. So your hill hold is all in the braking. And if you haven't trained your drivers properly on the braking, now they're getting a six-inch slide on hill hold, and so that's part of that training that we do with the drivers, with all three of the different drivers that'll be driving it, because there are very specific things in the handling of the vehicle that's different, but also when you come to your energy, kind of like you might get better gas mileage than I do on your car, and the way I drive, same thing on an electric vehicle. If you've got an aggressive driver that doesn't drive correctly, then you lose energy from that scenario. So that's where that driver training scenario becomes so important.
Are there's, are there any instrumentation on them to show the driver you're using excess?
It, it shows, it shows you what you are using, yes. You can watch that on the dial, you can see going in and going out, because remember, it also has regenerative braking.
Right.
So when you're going downhill, your regenerative braking is actually putting energy back into the battery, and so you do see that in the panel and what is being used or what is being put back.
I could see.
Along with a, with an S O C, that's just like a fuel gauge, it's an S O C that goes a hundred percent down.
All right. I didn't know if it was something to where that'd be the, the line of you're doing this, we're using way too much power.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't do it in that, in that fashion.
As an D C, we have the boost and the.
Yeah, yeah.
It would be nice if there was something like that, so the driver can say, oh, I'm using way more than what I need for, for this, and make it through the day. Other question was, what's the over, the rear overhang? I know some of the big buses used to be like thirteen feet behind the rear wheels.
Currently, the type Cs, they have twelve-foot overhang. I think this one's just about the same.
I think it's about the same, yeah.
So that shouldn't be an issue, when they're turning, and they're gonna make sure there's room for the back end to whip around?
Well, that, you gotta watch that, but what you wanna watch now with these types of buses is you're turning quicker than what you're used to.
You're up further, the driver's up further, so.
Correct.
That's why I was wondering if, because they'll be up here going, I can go now, and then the back end's swinging around and.
You feel the bump in the road after you've already crossed it, as a driver. So you're like, well, I didn't feel that pothole, and then you feel it, because of the fact that your wheel trails behind you.
So why would you mention a pothole? We don't have any potholes.
No, I know there's none in this county. It was when I was in Ohio County yesterday where I saw a pothole.
Good save.
So are people from the public invited to come to these press conferences and things, or not?
Absolutely.
Because I know, so they are?
Yes.
We have a full release, which will go out Monday, so next week, every day, we have a training and a deployment in the four counties. And so we have a, I call it the generic press release, it goes out Monday, it lays out the schedule of the whole week that will be seen, of when the, when the press conferences are, when the deployments are, in that sense. And I know that your staff is working with my P R agency, with your media and things. I know, for example, in Canaan County, the, the morning show was live on the run. I mean, they were doing their live morning cut-ins on the morning show from sitting on the bus going on that ride in the, in the first scenario. Question that follows along with what you were a lot of thinking that I want to make sure you're aware of, because this gets asked a lot of times, and it goes down a path you were talking about, and that's what happens when it runs dead and you're in the middle of the road, and all of a sudden it shuts down.
I wasn't gonna ask that.
So, just from a, from a safety perspective, I want to know, these buses derate. And when you start getting to eighteen and down to fourteen percent, the bus derates. What happens when that bus derates is you, you slowed. So you're forty-five, you're forty, and it slows your speed. What that does for you is that gives you the protection, that you're not gonna just die in the middle of the road and not be able to drive and these kind of things. You know that when the bus derates, if something's happened, then it's time to get off the road. And so you have that safety protection that's in there. And I just think that's important, that particularly for parents to know, this isn't gonna just die in the middle of the road. As a matter of fact, it's probably easier for a diesel bus to die in the middle of the road than it is for, for one of these buses.
I gotta think they'd be easier on brakes, because you got the regenerative, as they're, you know.
You should, and of course, maintenance costs on electric school buses are seventy, maintenance and operation costs on electric school buses are seventy to eighty percent less than on a diesel. You shouldn't have to replace brakes forever, because with the regenerative braking, your brake system has a, has a much longer life. I will tell you, however, the braking system on the vehicle is fantastic. And again, one of my consensus out of roundtables today was drivers talking about what really good braking system it does have, though the use of those brakes is less. Better thing to, to a question completely unrelated to the electric bus from earlier is tires. So one of the important things when you look at an electric vehicle, and the difference between a purpose-built electric vehicle and a retrofit. A retrofit is something where you're gonna pull the diesel guts out of it, and you put an electric engine in, and you call it an electric vehicle. Those vehicles aren't made to be electric vehicles. So you've got batteries in the wrong place, you've got weight imbalance, you've got excess tire wear, you've got safety issues. That's the difference when you go to a purpose-built vehicle, in this case, a monocoque chassis, a monocoque body, instead of a cab over chassis. School buses for forty to fifty years haven't been changed in their makeup. It's a cab over a chassis. The only place that human beings are moved in trucks is third-world countries. That's how we're moving schoolchildren, is the equivalent of third-world countries, because they're being moved in cab over chassis truck bodies. So you change that, and you go into a monocoque frame, and the batteries then have the protection of the frame rails that come in, and so you've got that safety protection from the electricity in, in that fashion. It's Castillium Aluminum is the body, which if you've been on an airplane, you've been inside Castillium Aluminum, which of course, Castillium is a West Virginia company as well. Our particular product right now comes from Checklist Slovakia. Hopefully in the future, we're able to be able to partner with another West Virginia company from that perspective. So I just think it's important, and, and one of the importance of, of the press work that we'll do with you is, parents feel that it's safe to put their children on the bus, because it is actually probably safer than a diesel vehicle, just from a safety perspective, before you ever even get into the health conditions that relate to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent, let's get into policies.
Yes, we have several tonight we need to address. Let's start with policy A, or letter A. This is policy. This is policy 4120.04, employment of substitutes. So this is our last meeting. This is for first reading. Superintendent recommends that the board approve policy 4120.04 as presented for first reading.
Need a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it. Any questions? Any comments? Good. All in favor of policy 4120.04, employment of substitutes for first reading, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Superintendent?
Right. Letter B is policy 4125. This is competency testing for service personnel. This is also for first reading. Superintendent recommends that the board approve for first reading policy 4125.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Any questions? Anything we need to know, Superintendent?
Right.
All in favor of policy 4125, competency testing for service personnel going out for first reading, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Superintendent?
Letter C is policy 4242. This is service personnel staff development. This is for first reading. Superintendent recommends that the board approve policy 4242 as presented for first reading.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Board members?
Second.
Now I've got a second. Do we have any questions, any comments? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of policy 4242, service personnel staff development going out for first reading, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the same. Superintendent?
Letter D is policy 2215. This is required courses of instruction. This is for second reading and adoption. Superintendent recommends that the board approve policy 2215 as presented.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Any questions? Did we get any information on any of these? Any feedback from the, from the community?
Beth, we didn't get any comments.
Okay. Board members? Hearing none. All in favor of policy 2215, required courses of instruction for adoption, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Superintendent?
Letter E is policy 2411. This is guidance and counseling. This is for second reading and adoption. Superintendent recommends that the board approve policy 2411 as presented.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions, board members? Hearing none. All in favor of policy 2411, guidance and counseling for second reading and adoption, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Superintendent?
This is letter F. This is policy 2432, driver education. This is for second reading and adoption. Superintendent recommends that the board approve policy 2432 as presented.
Need a motion?
I'll move.
Need a second?
Second.
Hearing none. All in favor of policy 2432, drivers' education, second reading and adoption, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same.
Next is policy 2625, civics education test. This is for second reading and adoption. Superintendent recommends that the board approve policy 2625 as presented this evening.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions? Comments?
We talked about civics in placement in the curriculum years because currently it's in the senior year. Is that where it will remain as far as you are concerned?
Well, we haven't had any discussion about changing that.
With the principals?
At this point. I think we would have to look at that very carefully with the administration and with the staff and the curriculum teams at the schools. Certainly open to examining it, but right now we've, we've not made any inroads as far as trying to change it. I mean, that's what it has been in the schedule so far.
Because unfortunately, I'm talking more about the personal finance part of this than the actual civics education because that's going to happen. That curriculum's going to be the same. I would like to think the students' receptiveness to the fiscal education would be, I just can't figure out how to get that across. And I know you all have worked on that. I know the schools have worked on that. I know the social studies departments have. But again, this is something I hear over and over from the public, you know, is that students just don't understand all that and no one's ever teaching them that, just like they say we don't teach handwriting, which I know we teach handwriting. So I just am curious if any of those conversations have happened.
I'm happy to take it to the curriculum teams at the schools and the departments and, you know, have some more information and get their recommendations as well. I mean, they would have good insight, I believe.
So currently, if you're at M-Tech, do we have a civics class there if you're a senior? So that would be something you're still going to have to do at your home high school?
Correct.
Okay, so this may be getting looked at and revamped to some extent if we're able to move forward, even if it's three or four years for the Renaissance school. Or it may become part of that school for the seniors that are there. Because we're still going to have the same graduation requirements, correct?
Absolutely. Well, until the, it's changed to the state level, but certainly. I mean, we can, anything's possible. We can, we'll continue to look at this. Again, I'd like to get some more teachers involved in the conversation and the schools involved in that conversation to, to see what they recommend as well here. Because certainly, personal finance is a big priority. And I know it was put into the curriculum or the purpose that you're talking about to make sure our students are ready to deal with those kinds of experiences.
All in favor of policy 2625, civics education test for second reading and adoption, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Superintendent?
Yes, next is policy 5111. This is the eligibility of resident, non-resident students for enrollment. This is the first time we're seeing this. Jennifer, would you explain to the board what we're trying to do here?
Yes, this is a very basic change to this policy. Basically, it's, it's referring non-resident students to policy 5113 instead of this policy.
So what is a non-resident student?
Out of county.
Oh, okay. So just a West Virginia resident, not a Montague County resident?
Yes, out of county.
First to meals students.
Yes.
What about like Pennsylvania students?
They would also be non-resident students.
Okay.
Anyone not in Montague County.
But a non-resident student from Pennsylvania would pay tuition to come to Mon County schools.
That's correct.
That's correct. So. It's happened once, I know of.
So we will bring that back to you at a future board meeting as a first reading for your approval for first reading. Next on our list this evening is policy 5113 that Counselor Carradine just mentioned. This is open enrollment for non-resident students. And so this one's a little bit more complicated. Jennifer, what are we working on here?
So there's a lot of language changes here, and this is to reflect what the current West Virginia state policy is. There are some optional items. And what we did, if you look under section A, there are some numbered items. We selected the items that is, that are currently in practice in Montague County as far as enrollment preferences. And then it also discusses an appeal process to the state superintendent and then, of course, the whole process itself for applying for the transfer and then the receiving and the granting county's obligations.
I think that's a question a little bit about A3. And it says the students who are children, grandchildren, or legal wards of employees of the non-resident district, which I assume is Mon County, which would be some people. Could that just say Mon County schools instead of, of the non-resident district? Because that would, that would lead to some confusion in question.
Well, they're kind of defined terms, resident and non-resident. So I think they're trying to keep it in line with that. So, I mean, we can make that change, but it's.
Put it in parentheses so there's never, because if you read that and it says students who are children, grandchildren, or legal wards of employees of the non-resident district, they could say, oh, that's the non-resident district that actually Mon, Marion County, or that would be a non-resident district also. But I don't know, it just would be clear, it'd be a little bit more clear if I just said even in parentheses afterwards, Montague County schools. It doesn't, I just, I just thought, as I read through this, it was kind of one where I was sitting there thinking, I understand exactly what you're saying legally, but everyone else needs to read this.
Well, then it's not right if you understand it.
Right, you see? Yeah. So just for perfect clarity, if someone would ask questions.
Superintendent, I think, or anybody else?
All right, we'll get that one cleaned up and we'll bring it back for first reading at a future meeting. So our last policy for your review this evening is policy 5331. And this is the administration of opioid antagonists. Jennifer, what do we have here?
So this and there's actually a series of policies that we'll be bringing before you. This is the first. And it's all based on West Virginia Board of Education's changes to its policy 2422.7, which are the standards for basic and specialized healthcare procedures. So it does impact a number of policies. This is one of those policies. A lot of what you see here are basically terminology changes, nothing really substantive. It gives better specificity rather than referencing nurses. It's RNs and LPNs or just RNs in some cases.
So are we talking about Narcan?
Yes.
This is all about Narcan?
Yes.
Okay. But of course, we're not going to say that because there may be other ones that are developed. Is that?
That's correct. Narcan is a brand name and, and the category that it falls within is the opioid antagonist, yes.
I would like to add, just for your clarification and your knowledge, is that our nurses are trained and that we do maintain that at our schools in the interest of safety.
The obvious question that I have is administration of Narcan only limited to, or into the LPNs within the school is, would not be consistent with the outside environment. I mean, it's, I wonder how this works? And can you explain a little bit to me about how this would work with, I want to say the do no harm type, where you're, where you're actually, where anyone can give this stuff. If someone, if I'm in the school and someone's having an event, I'm shooting with Narcan or whatever I have, and I'm not an LPN or an RN. I mean, I'm going to save someone's life if that's what I have in front of me. How does that work? What do we do if that situation comes up?
So under the policy, it, it does specify RNs, LPNs, or other non-medical school personnel that have been trained in this.
So the next question is, do we have that training?
As far, because we just actually got permission from the state medical director to proceed. And that was just, that's just occurred in the last two weeks. So our training has only extended to the RNs and the LPNs. We have discussed a team at each school because not everyone wants to have that responsibility. But I hear what you're saying, and for some reason, those people were absent that day and we needed to do something. I, I think what you're saying has merit, but right now, all we have is the RNs and the LPNs.
Mohawk Bowl Friday night. Something happens, a parent has Narcan and somebody's overdosing. We're saying against, it's against our policy for them to save the life. This is, when this, when this comes through and is finished, it's, we're going to say it is against the school policy to save someone's life with county provided and everyone's trying to provide all these Narcans. I, I understand the idea of someone might not understand exactly what's going on if a kid's having something and is not. And I understand the training part, but I think we need to, this policy's, I did read through it and I, and that was one of the things I was thinking, if it was a football game and something happened and there was a parent there that had Narcan and they understood and they were trained in general, what, what would we do? What's our policy say?
I think.
I don't think the policy really addresses it. This is more the supplies that are kept at the school, who has access and who can administer those supplies that are maintained by the school.
I think what you were referring to is the Good Samaritan law.
Right.
If you try to help somebody and it goes awry, then it's, it's the intent of, and I think, like you were saying, in the outside world, they encourage everybody to get Narcan.
Well, I guess my understanding is out of line, I guess, on this one. And I think as long as we're working towards that and we need to have something, I'd like to, I'd like an explanation of the policy in, in other, not, not tonight. Let's, let's bring that back and let's discuss that. Or, or let's just talk about it at another meeting, I think would be a good idea. Because it would be good to have something, I mean, if we're, if we're writing it down for certain stuff we have, we need to have that across the board.
I'm working on this for a year and a half, so I'm just happy to get it to the technical permission from the state. To actually do this and have this at our schools for the very reasons that you're saying. Because those things can and have occurred, and we need to be able to have an immediate response.
Because I think it'd be a lot less, like our AEDs.
Yes.
I think somebody would be more cautious about, do I know how to use this thing? Of course, it walks you through.
It does.
All of that as opposed to the Narcan, we keep using the, the brand name instead of calling it a tissue or calling it Kleenex, but.
Okay.
Well, because let's face it, on the weekends, when there's the school basketball leagues or other, there are not going to be those professionals. And the only way that's ever going to be in the building is if someone either has it in their car or carries it on their person. So, you know, just a hack.
Superintendent, personnel matters.
Okay, we'll bring that one back to you for first reading as well. So we'll move on to personnel. On your personnel lists, I do have several, just a handful of changes to your regular personnel list. On page one, line 10, if you would add the name Sylvester Stacy. Also on page one, line 13, if you would add the name Jackson Blair Kirsch. And also on page one, line 14, if you would change the date, 10/26/22 to TBD or to be determined. On page three, line 45, if you would change the date to begin to 1/1/2023 to the end of the 2022-23 school year. With those four changes, Superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list.
Need a motion?
So.
Go ahead.
I'm backing out. You guys do it.
I got Dan as the motion and Mike as the second.
I just keep saying it because it's like, oh.
Any questions?
We can't see each other.
Okay, hearing none. All in favor of the personnel list as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the same. Superintendent?
Okay, we do have an addendum to our personnel list this evening. I have one change to that. On page one, line 13, if you would change the effective date to 11/1/2022. With. that change, I recommend that the board approve the personnel list addendum.
So moved.
That's, that's the wrong line.
Is it the wrong line?
Yeah, it's put line 14.
That's line 14.
Oh, all right. Sorry. I had line 13.
I thought my eyes were, must've missed me there.
It's hard because it's, it's all one...
Okay, any questions, comments?
So the motion needs amended?
No, it's good.
Who is our second?
Do you have the motion?
I'll second it.
Yeah.
I thought I heard Mike say second.
I'm so far down here.
That's fine.
All in favor of the personnel list addendum as presented with the asterisk of, it is line 14 for the, for the change, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same.
All right. And I did want to update the, the board. Again, Mr. DeSantis gives me an update prior to all of our board meetings on the status of our professional employees. It's a little, little more stable than what we have in movement with service personnel a lot. So that, but we have, actually, he wanted to point out that there are currently 220 professional positions posted across the state as of today. So if you look at the website, there are 220 positions currently being posted. Here in Montague County, we have one high school position that's posted, and that is for an English long-term substitute. We have no middle school positions posted currently. All of our middle school positions are filled. We have two elementary school positions posted. One of those is for special ed and one is for a first grade teacher. And both of those are long-term substitute positions. We currently have 19 professionals on a leave of absence. We have two folks who have announced that they will be retiring during the school year. And we have had five folks resign since the beginning of the school year. So, Mr. DeSantis, thank you for, for those updates. I appreciate that. And I'm sure the board does as well. Mr. President, our next board meeting is, I believe, the 7th.
November 7th.
November 7th because...
Election Day is the next day.
Election Day is on the 8th and we, we close. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you.